So you were saying, Brad, what's going on with the education tax? Do you want to fill us in on that?
Yeah, the state is so far in the hole because they're not getting the money from the general fund that they usually do to put into the education tax because of all the businesses closed and so on and so on. So they are projecting anywhere from a nine to an eighteen percent increase in the education tax, which scares socks off me. So I have sharpened my scissors and, you know, I think we need to either be at last year's figure or perhaps below it.
Wow, I had not heard that they were talking about increases like that.
I brought one Herald and then there was something the other day, I think it was from VLCT about it.
Alright, well that's good information to have. Anybody else have any thoughts or insights as to where we should be headed?
They'll have the final thing on that, I think his name is Brian, somebody who has to give the report by the end of the year. So he's working on it, that projection.
Well, and, you know, we can aim in one spot, we still would have time to make changes at the end of the year if we had to, to the budget.
Right.
Um, well, do other people agree with Brad that we should be aiming for level budgeting with net last year or below? Anybody disagree?
Well, I don't think we should go lower, I mean, everybody's having a rough time, but, you know, we should try to keep it close to the same as possible, but, you know, this is just an extraordinary event that happened which is still unpredictable what's gonna happen, but we don't want to slam the town with a big tax increase. We just, you know, try to keep it the same, or even if we go over a little bit, but at least show that we're trying to, you know, keep a steady course here and not put our town or anybody else in the hole.
Alright, so I think that it sounds like we agree we should be aiming for at the, you know, let's aim for now to level budget for last year, and then if we decide when the education figures come out that we really need to try to do more and that we just have to sacrifice, we can take, you know, look at it with, as you said, Brad, a pair of scissors, that. How's that sound for a process?
That sounds good to me.
Then we'll just emphasize that the state made us do it.
Yeah.
Due to the state circumstances, which we really don't have much control over.
Right.
Okay.
True. Well, so let's talk about where we might be able to make some changes to what we have in front of us. Doug and I had taken a quick look at that today and we had talked about some things. Doug, have you already estimated a little more dollars for the recording fees? Is that in there already?
No, it isn't, if not.
Okay, so, um, so we can do a, uh, we can decrease what we need to collect by what we're estimating is probably, what we're thinking, we can probably increase recording fees by maybe two thousand dollars because sales have been up so much and they've been up, you know, since July. Now, they may still drop down, you know, maybe there won't be properties for sale or whatever, but already there's been a pretty big increase in those, you know, I mean, well, who knows what's gonna happen next year? But, um, but we had thought maybe we could estimate that as a little higher since sales seem to be skyrocketing. We could be wrong about that, but we could, you know. What do you think, Brad?
I think what you're saying is true, I mean, there have been a lot of sales and, you know, I would anticipate that that would continue.
Okay, so let's add a little more revenue, which will help with two thousand dollars. And then, you know, another place we could look at is our building reserve fund.
Yeah, I think. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should drop that by, you know, five thousand?
Uh, what page is that on?
Uh, let me see, I gotta pull mine up.
It's on page two. It's in the first section there.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you read it to us, Brad?
Uh, well, um, we, last year, we had fifteen thousand and we upped it to twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, we were trying to go to twenty-five, so what if we up it to twenty instead? And it'll save us another five thousand.
Yeah, or keep it at fifteen.
Well, we could do that too, but maybe why don't we look at other places and then we can decide if we, you know, I mean, it's gonna come down to probably five or six items that we're gonna wanna balance between. So let's start with five on that and then take a look at some others. The other place I thought was, I thought we could add income to, if we're gonna, we put in that line for ten thousand extra for some sort of law enforcement, but that law enforcement should bring in some income as well. Um, and if just our current share springs in about, what, fifteen hundred, I think Doug told me this afternoon, so I was thinking we could probably put in the three thousand dollars revenue against that ten thousand dollars. Does that sound?
That's really iffy and I'm thinking we just have to eliminate the ten thousand dollars due to what we have.
Let's see, I mean, that could be on the table, but if we reduce it to seven because we've got, you know, we're saying we want tickets, we want to enforce, because that's what the public's asking us to do. But I can go either way with it, that's your all call. You wanna talk about some of the other categories first and come back to that one?
Sure.
Um, uh, let's see, we could, um, alright, so our paving, we had increased our paving, I think, from a hundred and five to a hundred and twenty-five, uh, let's see if we can find that, resurfacing. And I know that our goal is to get it up to a hundred and twenty-five, but maybe we can't do it all in one year. I'm looking for it now. Has anybody found it yet?
I did, but I didn't count the pages, it's like on six or seven.
There it is, yeah, we had one hundred and five last year and we talked about going to one twenty-five. Um, you know, maybe we take another five thousand out of there, or ten thousand, or seven thousand?
Take ten thousand off that, hell.
I would agree. I know, me too, but we gotta do this.
Just take ten thousand off that.
I think Doug's right, we take ten off.
Alright, so we're gonna take ten thousand off of, um, retreatment, right?
Yeah, that'll still be a good increase from what we had at ninety-three thousand a few years ago.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
If we keep paying Tommy.
He's saying. We missed Steve. Steve started to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve, I couldn't hear you, try again.
I was gonna say, as long as we keep paying Tom, as soon as he gets the work done, he's been giving us a pretty good break on stuff too.
Yeah, good point. Good point, so I think that the hundred fifteen thousand could go, you know, a long way and let's do that, yeah. Now, I had talked with Doug today about salt because I was thinking that, you know, we've got our new position approved and we're gonna be calibrating the salt and that maybe we can save a little on that. And Doug told me that Larry's doing a fabulous job on that already and that he thinks that we, you know, we could maybe cut about three thousand off the salt. How you feel about that?
Sounds good to me, because he saved a lot of salt these last two storms, two, three storms, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've only used one load of salt and that's including the salt they put into the sand pile.
Yeah. He's definitely doing a good job, Salton, if you're compared to what we used to see him.
Yeah, that's not to say that, uh, you know, we may end up, it depends on, you know, it's variable. I wouldn't go below what we got now, but, you know, like I said, we can always add more to it. We can, you know, straight line it, what we had this year, instead of increasing it and then just hope to hell we don't get a lot of icy weather, but they have been, and I did talk to them again and I said, you know, I just told them, I said, "The main thing is don't plow it back off the road."
Yeah.
And he said, "No, we're not, we've been letting it set," and they actually added some Saturday night, 'cause I had to, no, it wasn't Saturday night, it was Monday, when we got the snow, or whatever night it was. I ended up, I had to call them back in, 'cause everything turned to crap. And all they did was mixed a little up through the Brook Road and where it was icy and stuff and they only used a half a load of, uh, sand and salt mix and it bared it right up, so they are a lot more cautious on what they're doing now. And I hate, I hate to say this between us and the lampposts, but, uh, they've been doing one hell of a job since they haven't had Charlie there. I think Charlie was a lot of our problems with holding them back from doing what they're supposed to do, because they didn't dare to go against it.
So where?
It's under general, right, but I don't see salt, I see gravel and stone.
No, we got salt at fifty thousand.
Calcium chloride, Brad.
It was fifty thousand this year and fifty-five thousand is what we had in. I don't know what page it is, Brad, but it's there, under.
Second.
Calcium chloride.
Seven thousand.
Four, four up from the bottom.
Yeah, it's about seven thousand.
No, it's fifty or fifty-five thousand, Brad.
Oh, 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 I'm on a, I'm, oh yeah, I gotta get my reading glasses focused here. Alright, hold on there.
Are you comfortable, Paul, Steve, all you road people, are you all comfortable with putting it what it was last year at fifty thousand?
I don't think the prices went up a whole lot, but I would, I wouldn't cut it, but I would leave it at same and, like I said, if we end up with some cold weather and, uh, they did, they did say that they switched over to the better salt and, you know, for just adding to the road, so we'll see with that.
We're gonna leave that at fifty thousand, I gotta keep us moving, we're gonna run out of time.
I still don't, I still don't see, is it under general maintenance?
No, it's under winter roads. After the winter section. So what about the equipment reserve fund, people? Let's take a look at that. I gotta find it, uh, that's at the bottom of page seven.
Enough that we bumped up.
Brad, salt is on page seven also.
Yeah, I see it now. So we're gonna keep that at fifty-five or we're gonna lower it?
We're gonna put it back to what it was last year at fifty.
Oh, at fifty, okay.
Yeah. And then the reserve funds, um, the equipment reserve, we did twenty-five last year and we were trying to do forty this year. Should we cut some from that?
Yeah, I would say no more than thirty.
So we cut ten?
I would recommend it.
How do other people feel?
How much do we have in the reserve total right now?
There's a hundred and fourteen right now.
I'm okay dropping ten.
We'll be adding that twenty-five, so we've actually got, you know, we got a hundred and forty right now.
I'm okay with dropping ten.
Okay. And then the other fund, the structure reserve fund, for structures, we had ten last year, we put in twenty this year. Um, the only caveat I'd say on that is that we haven't figured out yet, because I just haven't had time to do it, and, um, is the road ramps we might get and any mats we might need? And that could be where we could find money for some of our road structures. But I'm wondering if we couldn't reduce that to fifteen, because lots of times the match is our labor and materials, or our labor and trucks too.
Sure, there we go.
That sounds good to me.
So fifteen.
Alright, so, um.
That puts us at thirty-seven thousand, that's a thirty-seven thousand dollar difference, right there with everything that you've changed so far.
And I think that's gonna put us at a level budget, don't you?
See, we need, you wanted thirteen, so we're talking, yeah, it should be, it'll put us a little lower than last year, actually.
Yeah.
It depends, you know, I'm going on last year's grand list and you can't do that, but it's all we've got right now to go by.
Right, it's all we've got right now, so I think, I think we've pretty much, if we do those changes, I think we've pretty much come in where we had philosophically said we want to. And if we sit on that for a little while until we get more information from the, um, uh, from the education side of things, and Brad, if you'd keep an eye on that and keep us posted, that would be great.
Okay.
How do people feel about that?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, I think that that's, um, I think that.
Okay, well, I'll get these. I'll get these changes put in tomorrow and I will re-figure the rate and email everybody the new figures.
Perfect.
Thanks.
And if anybody has any concerns or thoughts, why don't you send them to me and I'll sort of consolidate them so that if we need to get together, or if I think we do, I'll let people know.
Okay.
Alright. Cool, well, we moved through that faster than I thought. Um, I can share with you all that I did do, um, I did do research on the town clerk positions and the town treasurer's positions, and, uh, I'll tell ya, I got the VLCT compensation report and pored through it. It is just as Doug told me when he was trying to fill out our information to submit it to them, it is a onerous report and it's hard, hard to make a lot of sense out of, and there were lots of places in it where the numbers didn't add up, you know, they put the hourly wage, the number of hours, and then the salary didn't equal, you know, it just didn't add up. Um, but from the research that I saw, Dambie is still running a little high in total and everything, oh, that's the other thing, is that other towns have different positions, so, you know, we have a clerk and a treasurer and two assistant clerk, assistant clerk and treasurer, others have clerk, treasurer combined, others have administrative support to do some of that work, others have managers, et cetera, et cetera. So what I did is I looked at the total cost that towns our size put towards, you know, those administrative duties, um, clerking and treasurer, and so regardless of who was in what position, what was the total cost they were putting towards it, and Dambie's still a little higher than the others, by about seven thousand dollars. Um, um, and, you know, that, you know, but that's where we are because of when we divided up the treasurer and the clerk. Um, and, you know, when we look at, you know, our clerk, you know, we're competitive in wage. Actually, we're a little better in wage because our clerk works less hours than a lot of the other clerks that get paid the same amount, but they work, many of them put in an average of, I think the average I found sounds our size was about twenty, um, twenty-eight hours a week. And our clerk puts in less hours, I believe, I'm not positive, but I think, you know, her schedule is more like eighteen hours, but I'm sure she puts in more than that. Um, but I guess what I'm saying is that, that all things considered, I think for our clerk and our treasurer, we're very, we're competitive, um, and I didn't see, you know, we made an adjustment in treasurer last year and clerk has always been a little bit over because of that initial divide. I think we're getting closer and closer to, you know, catching up, but I'm not sure I could, based on the numbers, justify an increase. I'm trying to think what else I might have researched, oh, I did some researching on the assistant clerk position too, but I don't think we'll get into that because that's gonna be a union negotiated thing. Um, which also reminds me, when we get into our meeting in a few minutes, I was gonna need to amend our agenda a little bit because we need to, um, we need to, um, we need to think about voting who's gonna represent us in our union negotiations, our regular contract negotiations that we now have to do. And also, we have to decide if we want Brian Smith and Carbine to represent us. So I'll add that to the, uh, agenda when the time comes. So we have five minutes to kill before we start our meeting, anybody? Anything to be discussed today?
Before we start then, I have a question that maybe Treasurer Doug can help us out with. Um, on the library at school requesting the Silas Griffiths Fund, um, I'm a little confused because as a trustee of public funds, we just gave them money to build this outdoor structure. So now, is there some other fund that I'm not familiar with that they're requesting money from? And if so, how much is in that fund?
I think they're requesting from the Estelle Griffiths Fund. I'm not mistaken, but I'm not positive, I know they're coming to you, asking you guys, and I think it's that fund that they're looking to get funds out of.
Yes, it's the Griffiths Fund.
Yeah, that was just asked through us, right?
What was the question?
What is the fund, what's the fund that they put the building up out of? I don't even know about that one.
That's the trustee of public funds that gets the, um, the money from the Estelle Griffiths. And we, um, we had a meeting last year and we went through all that, how we were going to invest it and how we were going to distribute it to them. So I'm not sure if they're jumping the gun on what we told them, or is there some other fund that I'm not aware of?
Brad, I thought that was like, was that last year or was that, they did ask for money from it several years ago and it was approved, um, and I think this is an additional request. Because isn't that money supposed to, isn't that targeted for Courier School, or Dambie and Mount Tabor School children or something?
Right. So they.
And Doug, I think there's nine thousand dollars in the account now. Isn't that what we?
Yeah, I think that's what it is now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We researched it.
And the last time they pulled money from that, it was for the playground, just that playground, playground equipment.
For the little kids playground, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and that was like three, four years ago.
Is that what you're remembering, Brad, or do you think there's been another request that we don't know about?
It was two years ago, when they moved them over from Mount Tabor.
Right.
And then Jim and I met with them back in the late spring and that's when we talked about, um, they would spend the money on this outdoor structure that they just built. And we gave them the whole outline, I don't have that folder handy, but, um, I'm not sure that it's really a select board decision, I think it's the trustee of public funds decision, unless there's some other fund that I'm not aware of, as I said.
We approved the one for the playground.
Now, the one that was approved for that building, that structure, we never cut them a check for that. It's never, it never came to me with any amount or anything on that, so I don't know.
Okay, I'm gonna have.
Out of their own pocket?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I'm gonna have to pull that folder and make. Ben, are you gonna, Doug, or I can just look at? We'll get it. We'll get it understood.
You're breaking up terrible here, I can't even understand you.
Fine.
So, yeah, I can pull, I can pull that account and I can show you exactly what's been paid out of that trustee of public funds account.
And we should absolutely make sure who it is that authorizes it, I think in the past it's been the select board.
Not that one, not that one that Brad's talking about, I think that's the, one of the cemetery, but it's the trustee of public funds cemetery side, is that right or am I wrong on that?
It's got two things, the top of the page was all the cemetery stuff and then the bottom of the page was this other business.
Right, right.
And we told them how we were gonna invest it and how we were going to distribute it.
Right, and I think they were gonna get like six hundred dollars a year or something like that? It wasn't very much.
Right, I think you're pretty close in saying that. So if that's the case, um, you know, this three thousand, over three thousand dollar request, um, there's just not money for right now.
And that's what they're requesting that out of the Estelle Griffiths Fund, not from the, not from that fund that you're talking. It's a separate fund, it's a different fund.
Yeah, Brad thinks they're the same fund.
No, they're two different funds.
Okay.
If you come down, I can show you, if you come down to the office, I can show you the different funds, there's actually, and then there's the Catherine Griffiths Fund too, so there's actually three different funds.
Right, but wasn't hers just for music?
It is, it is, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you come down, I can pull up all three of those funds and you can sort it out.
There is in there that we can disperse?
For that, for that Estelle Griffiths, for that one?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we had, the last time when we went through it with the playground, Richard Smith, Richard Smith from up in Wallyford or Ralland, he sent down the information that we needed to know how that we could disperse that. And it should be still in my file down at the office.
We actually, we actually have this on our agenda, 'cause Amanda's gonna be giving us a presentation of what she wants and then we can discuss about how we wanna handle that, but it's seven oh one, so I figure we should start the meeting, is that okay, guys?
Okay, sure.
I see that Amanda's joined us and David Shamhines joined us, hi Amanda, hi David. Um, but let's, uh, get the meeting started, so we'll call the meeting to order at seven oh one. And, uh, our first order of business, let me get my agenda up, um, is to review our agenda and make any necessary changes. Um, I, as I said, I wanted to add under, we can do it under other business or as a separate item, but we need to discuss and vote on who's gonna represent the select board for union contract negotiations. And also, we need to decide whether we want to have Brian Smith and Carbine represent the town, so maybe, um, um, you know, so we'll add those, we can add them under other business, it doesn't matter. We should probably do it towards the end, because then we need an executive session briefly at the end of this meeting so that we can start to discuss our negotiating strategy. Um, so if we can add an executive session for negotiating strategy on the end. And then, um, we also wanted to add, uh, we have a contract extension for e-recycling, electronic recycling design. Does anybody else have any amendments?
Nope, can't take a none.
If there's none others, I hear a motion to accept that agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion. So I'm old. I'll second it.
Okay. Um, so we gotta do roll call vote, let me get to my list of names, 'cause I have to be consistent with that. Hold on a second. Um, too many pages here in front of me, give me a second. Um, well, let's, I'll start a new list, okay, so we'll just start, let's see, Paul?
Yes.
Um, Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn, yes, okay. Um, all in favor, motion passes. Um, next would be to approve our minutes of November twelfth and November nineteenth. Um, can I hear a motion? Do you wanna do them together or separate?
Do them, do them together.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second? Great, any discussion? Not hearing any, Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't at the one meeting.
Okay. And Lynn, yes. So one abstain for four, motion carries. Moving on, next on our agenda is Lyle. Lyle, are you with us? Have you joined us?
I have.
You have. There you are, hi, Lyle.
Hi there.
Been a long time since I've seen you today.
Yes, thanks for having me.
Well, thank you. So please, tell us about the marketing initiative.
Okay, well, great. I'm Lyle, yes, I'm the Executive Director of the Chamber and Economic Development. It is a new organization that merged two different groups. The Rutland Economic Development Corporation and the Rutland Region Chamber of Commerce decided during this time of COVID that it was probably wise that we not duplicate effort in any way. And so we have come together as one organization with about 55 people on eight different committees. And we continue to do the work of both organizations. And when we were coming together in the merger, that now houses both organizations as one, under one roof. We started with six staff members. We now have four staff members. We're hoping to be able to do all the work that we were doing before and maybe a little bit more in different ways. But one of the things that we began doing about four or five years ago was the regional marketing initiative. And we began to do things together, a policy committee, a marketing committee and so forth. Logically, we came together during this time of COVID because it just made sense. And as we started looking at regional marketing again, we realized it was time to go out and start talking to people about it. It's a 10-year plan and we're now entering our fifth year of that plan. And so we're going around to talk about why, right now, in the middle of COVID, are we encouraging people to talk to us about moving here? And we think the time, quite frankly, is right because we wanna be in line when people can and will be coming to live with us in Vermont. The regional marketing initiative is for the entire county. It's not just for Rutland City or the bigger towns. And so we're coming out to talk to folks about that. The initiative encourages folks to go to our realrutland.com website. And we would encourage you folks to go take a look at that because I'm here to ask for your help. And in two different ways. Yes, I'm glad it's budget night because I'm coming around asking all the different towns if they would like to contribute in some way to the program. I'm also asking though for your support because we need to know what you want us to market about Danby. Tuesday night, I was in Mount Tabor and asking the same question. How would they like us to market Mount Tabor? What would they like us to talk about? What's special that would attract people to the region? We recognize and recognized about five years ago that population decline was a big issue for us. It was affecting our tax base. It was affecting how we can maintain our roads, our schools and so forth. And that if we needed or wanted to maintain things the way we'd like to, that we would need to expand our tax base. Because quite frankly, the last time that Lynn saw me, my beard might not have been quite this white. And it's getting whiter and I'm getting less hair because I'm moving towards retirement. And there are many, many people moving towards retirement. We want them to stay here, but we also need people to come in and replace them in the jobs that they're going to be retiring from. And we want a broader tax base. And I go around and I describe to people that our tax pie is about this big. And every year, we go to Montpelier with our delegation and we re-slice that tax pie and we make half the people mad and half the people happy. And then next year, we kinda do it again. But what we really need to do is we need to make the tax pie bigger so that we're able to get things that we need and that there's more money coming into the system. To do that, we need more people. And our population has been in decline. And it's a serious problem for our employers. And again, as I mentioned earlier, it's a serious problem for schools and for our businesses. So our goal, when we merged, when this Chamber and Reddit came together as one, we sent out a survey to all our members. There are about 400 members that are in our organization that pay some dues so they can help support what we're doing. We asked them, what would you like us to do? They said, keep doing the regional marketing initiative because it's gonna help retail, it's gonna help hospitality, it's gonna help our municipalities. We need more people. The second thing they said was do support of small businesses. So we've been working with small businesses with grants that have been available through the COVID Relief Act to help them get to the other side of what's going on. And so through a technical assistance program. So we looked seriously at what our members said and we now are continuing down that road of the regional marketing initiative. We're in our fifth year and we've spent about $450,000 over the last four and a half years. We've raised that money from municipalities, from businesses, from grants, and we've spent most of that money. We have a marketing firm that's supporting us. They've helped with the realrutland.com website. And we now have launched a concierge service so that if you go to realrutland.com and you ask for a concierge, you will be connected with an old person, me, or a younger person who has a young family, Jeanette, or with Dylan, who's even younger than Jeanette. And you have a choice to talk to one of the three of us. And you'll be able to set up an appointment and we'll talk to you about our region. But really, what I'm doing is I'm interviewing you and trying to find out, what is it you really like to do? Because we have 25 other people that I'm then gonna choose from and connect you with one of those people that is your demographic, has the same number of kids perhaps you have and will answer the questions you have. We've got 5,000 names and a database of emails that we're beginning to sift through a system that's automated by our marketing firm. And we're hoping we're gonna get some hot leads that come out of that. Hot leads that we're gonna set up with the concierge service and hot leads that we hope will either move here or encourage other people to look at what we have that's special in our region. We're hoping that businesses will come. Already, we've had 30 families, more than 30 families, I think 32 at this point, moved because of the service that we provide. And interestingly enough, of those 74 people, some are kids, some are single, some are married. Of those 74, about 15 are remote workers, which is beginning to show us a trend. And so when we come out and talk to you on the economic development side, I wanna know, how's your connectivity? Because that's gonna be key for people wanting to come to Danby and come to our county because broadband connectivity is extremely important. So why am I here tonight? I'm a lifelong administrator. I could keep talking. Lynn could tell you, I could talk all night. And I would put everybody to sleep, my apologies. But I'm here for two things. One, at some point, if you're interested, we would love to have you help us financially with this program. As I said a minute ago, municipalities are buying into it. Rutland City is donating $16,000. Brandon's donating money, Pittsburgh, Fairhaven and others. And we've been going out and they say, well, how much money are you looking for, Lyle? Well, we're asking everyone for a dollar per person if you're interested in supporting that. And for Danby, I think that's around $1,300 or so. I think there are about 1,300 people in Danby or so. I also realize that you have other people that are asking for money too. And that you also have culverts that you need to purchase. And there are other things you have to do that come first. So more important than the money is we need someone who can help us figure out what is important to you about your community. We need that list so that we can come take pictures, so that we can talk about Danby. Because on the realrutland.com website, there is a place for Danby. There's already a picture. And we've got a little quote in there that talks about Danby based on what we think about Danby, but it needs to be what you think about Danby. And we wanna add more to that. So that as people come in, they can look at all of our 27 communities and decide where they'd like to visit. So my ask tonight is, if you're interested, what's the process for asking for money? And quite frankly, it doesn't have to be this year. My bosses might say, don't say that, Lyle. But more importantly, we need your contribution so that we know what you want us to sell about Danby. The money certainly would be helpful. We have a budget for the coming year of about $120,000. And I should have mentioned that businesses are the big contributor. About two-thirds of the money that's come in has come from businesses and the business community. They recognize to get the employees that they need, they need a larger pool to pull from. And the people that are moving in, quite frankly, we targeted the young professionals. We're looking at ages 25 to 40. And we're looking to bring them here so that they'll build families here and buy homes here. So.
Well, they ain't gonna buy, they're not gonna buy too many homes here because all of our homes have already been sold in Danby. That's what's up for sale.
Well, and interestingly enough, around the state, home prices have gone up about 26% during this COVID time. People are looking at Vermont.
Well, Danby's homes, all the ones that was for sale, have been sold.
And we don't, we don't have a lot of stuff on the market right now, but that could change. Hey, Lyle, would you, are you asking for a straight out budget line item or are you asking to maybe get put on the appropriation?
Well, we would love to have it be a budget line item because then it's right in your budget and that's easier for us. Other towns have done it both ways. So it's really, whatever process you feel most comfortable following, you've been elected by your people, whatever you think they would like to see would be the way we wanna go.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions for Lyle?
I have a couple things. When you went to Mount Tabor, this is Brad Bender speaking. When you went to Tabor this day, what did they feel were advantages of the area?
Well, I asked the same thing of them. They didn't really give me any answers that night. They did choose to go the route of having their voters vote on it. They have all of, I think, 250 people there. But they really didn't talk much about what they felt their assets were.
Okay. We do have land for sale so people could buy land and build homes. We do have excellent broadband here. We have Vermont Tel. And I actually have had better internet service here than I did when I worked for Rutland City Public Schools. So I think we have a great plus in that area. And I think it would be appropriate to put you on appropriations part of our website, which is where the Rutland Regional Mission is, visiting nurses, Rutland Mental Health and so on and so on and so. And you don't have to have any signatures or anything this year. It's just, basically get the letter and how much want to ask for and we'll put it up.
Well, if you were so willing, I would love to do that. And I could get that letter to whomever you would like me to send it to.
That would go to the-
Go ahead, Brad.
That would go to Janice Arnold, our town clerk at 30 Brook Road.
Very good.
Lynn, could I chime in here for a moment?
Yes, please, Bob.
So the piece about updating the website and all that stuff and articulating what makes Sandy special, I'd be glad to work with you on that, Lyle.
That'd be great, Robert, thank you. Bob, thank you. And I think, Bob, I may have your email address, but I think we've changed it.
We met, we met here at our house years ago, I think, when you introduced us to the planning commission.
Yep, yep, yep. I remember that.
Yeah, that's great. And Bob's our implementation coordinator for our town plan and then if there's other people to be brought into that process, he can reach out to them as well. So that'd be great.
That'd be perfect. Thanks, Bob.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Lyle.
Okay, I will get that letter to Janice and I appreciate the time tonight. I know you've got lots of things to talk about other than this. So if you would like me to come back someday, as Lynn will tell you, I can keep talking, so. All right.
Thanks again, Lyle, bye-bye.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Bye-bye.
So let's see, next up on our agenda, I believe we have Amanda. I'm just checking my agenda. Yes, Amanda, would you like to go next and tell us what you're interested in for the library at the school?
Yeah, sure, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda Beegan. I am the Library Media Specialist at Courier Memorial School. This is my second year. It's been a very fun, very interesting for a couple of years. But we, and I've asked Dave to join me tonight just in case there are questions, I think he can better answer for you. We are requesting $3,249.87 to the exact for some new shelving and cabinets for the library. There are a few things that have happened or that I noticed that really kind of led us to start looking at this. The first thing being that last year when kids would be doing their checkout during their library time, they really weren't able to reach many of the books. It was very difficult for them. And actually, this year, while I've had time to become more acquainted with what the library has, I've noticed that the picture books are split into, there's a top shelf and a bottom shelf. About 60% of the books on the top shelf had not been checked out in over 10 years. Not due to age or anything, but simply because students couldn't reach it or easily searched the books. On the bottom, only about 10% of books haven't been checked out in the last 10 years and that was due to age. So that's just an example of how some of our shelving is inaccessible for the kiddos at their age, their height. The nonfiction, which is very popular, it's also unshelving too high. And actually, while I was asking, I'm sure you all saw my packet of information I sent, I was taking a picture of Kellen, one of our fourth graders, to just kinda demonstrate the height problem. And she actually dropped a book on her head, which was a very unfortunate thing that happened as a result of that. So the second thing that happened, aside from our shelving just being kind of inaccessible for kids, is the renovation that occurred this past summer. It took away a significant amount of the library's floor space and also made one of the walls fairly unusable due to fire codes and the new placement of doors and such. The nonfiction used to reside on that wall and the nonfiction takes up about 50% of our entire collection. It is the most popular part of our collection. And, you know, it's, obviously, the teachers love it, but the kids do as well. So I'm looking mainly for a new home for those because the shelving can no longer go on those walls. They're tall and they're bulky. So placement in the middle of the room just won't work. It would leave no space for actual classes, for having 20-plus kids in the space with me as an adult. That gets very tricky when I do have good line of sight, when it's blocked by tall shelves and me not being able to see the kids. That really becomes a safety problem, both for me being able to locate them but seeing what they're doing. So in looking for ways to house the nonfiction collection without having to get rid of, or find new homes for 50% of the books in the library, we have found some shelves that will help us move the picture book collection and make that more accessible. Move the chapter book section. Make our easy readers more prominent, which is a very important collection right now for our current student population. And then that, by moving those, it finds space for our, again, popular nonfiction collection and creates a welcoming space. Dave and I did a lot of work trying to find shelves. We've been working on it since the beginning of the school year. And we have finally found some that are sturdy, that we will be able to mount, that are fairly reasonable price-wise, but will be long-lasting. And they were actually kind enough to offer a discount and to get rid of shipping costs, which was really- which was really helpful. Um, the bummer is that we still need to find the money for that. So we were hoping that the Silas Griffiths Funds would be, um, kind of a, a place for that. Um, especially with all the, uh, COVID-related costs at school this year. There just isn't, um, room in the budget for it. So in order to have kids back in the library next year, which is our goal, um, they're really missing it this year. In order to have them back in the library and to have a safe space for classes, uh, unfortunately, we, we need to find shelving, so. Does anyone have any questions? Dave, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I got a, I got a quick question. All my kids, grandkids went through, uh, Courier down there. On the library, oh, I'm Paul Pierce. Uh, now, is the lack of use because they couldn't get to the books? Or the lack of use that the books weren't rotated for, so they could see them? Or lack of use because they were using, um, internet instead of the books? And are the books updated to the point where the kids would be interested in them?
So that's a, that's a great question, Paul. Um, the, the main problem with the checkout was, is, um, the shelving. Kids not being able to reach them and not being able to see them. So, uh, some of the collection is fairly outdated and I'm, I'm working on that. I currently have a separate grant to replace, uh, some titles, which is nice. Unfortunately, grants are only made for purchasing books and not for shelves. Um, but the picture books, specifically what I was talking about, uh, I hope if you have, um, the pictures I sent ahead of time. Half is stored in almost a bucket-like process so the kids can see the covers of the book, which is very important for them in choosing, especially, you know, kids who can't read. They do all their book shopping by what's it look like. The top row is stored in milk crates. And I believe the intention with that, when it was put in place, was to allow that style of kids being able to slip through while seeing the front covers of the book. Unfortunately, it's just too tall and the milk crate actually inhibits the kids being able to see the title. Um, Carter, who I had, try and take a peek. I asked him several times to try and look through the books and he kept saying, "Mistaken, I can't." Like, I, I just can't. He's standing on his tippy toes and he's, he's reaching in like this. Um, and it's just because you have to be my height, and I'm five foot three, to be able to look down in to properly see the titles and to flip through and get a good idea. Most of the books that had been checked out in that section, um, within the past five years, were all from teachers who were using them in classrooms. The kids strongly gravitate towards the ones that they can see, um, and reach. But I hope that answers your question.
Any, any other questions?
Ms. Beegan, this is Chris Hardaway. Um, could you repeat the number of what you're asking for? It seems to be different than what you had highlighted on the, uh, material.
Okay, sorry. Um, uh, three thousand, two hundred, forty-nine and eighty-seven cents.
Thanks.
Yes.
Amanda, this is Brad Bender.
Hi, Brad.
I, uh, have a few things for you. I'm one of trustees of public funds. So we are going to review the account and see what we have available there. And they, I also hold a certification in library science and taught library down in Thunderland for a number of years. So I appreciate what you're going through with these little guys. Um, it's really a shame, I think, and of course, we can't do anything about it now, it's too late, that, um, when that architect or whoever came up with the wall idea, didn't think to incorporate bookshelves into the wall. And that could have been a fun thing, that, um, had storage cabinets up above, bookshelves on the bottom and in between, bookshelves on the other side in the office. But too late for that now. So, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, um, see what we can come up with for you and get back to you on that.
Thank you, Brad. I appreciate it. Yeah, as, uh.
Absolutely.
As Dave told me, um, he was talking to me this, earlier this week. He told me that this project was in process for a very long time. And yeah, last year when I came in and kind of learned about the plans, it was far too late for me to, to try and make any changes to their plan. Dave can.
Cut those existing cases in half, cut them down?
Um, I asked, we, we did talk about that. I don't know, Dave, can you better answer that question?
Dave, are you with us?
Doesn't sound like it.
Oh, okay. Um, he's on mute. Um, we were having trouble setting up his audio, um, earlier yesterday.
Yeah, it won't work. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, yeah, um, no, it was, uh, it said it was on everything, but Brad, you were cutting out, so I couldn't hear what you said.
I was wondering if there's any way that those existing bookcases, uh, could be cut in half? So that they'd only be two shelves high instead of like four or five, whatever they are now?
The existing ones are about sixteen inches deep, um, that are on wheels. The couple that are on the shelf or on the wall, over on the brick wall, will remain there. But them other ones that are on wheels that roll around are like sixteen inches deep. And they're just, they're so big and bulky, um, they're just really not feasible to have down there anymore. Um, I was looking to try to cut them down, but there's just, in order to do it, you're gonna have so much time invested because it's like a plywood, they're gonna splinter up on you. You're gonna end up reseizing them. That's the only problem with that. Because I, by all means, I looked at every different direction to doing it, the cheapest way out to begin with. Um, I even priced out trying to build them, um, and timeframe, I just never get enough done to have it done for them.
Well, the, the wheels were for a reason, that we could use that room for other functions at different times. So is that still something that's necessary? Would these new bookcases, uh, want to be moved? Or is that room, um, no longer viewed as a, as an alternative room for, um, a big open space?
So, uh, the, what will be kind of in the middle of the room are short bookcases and that will house all of the picture books. They, we will not be putting them on wheels because we don't want them, the higher up they are, the stier they are. So for safety purposes. Uh, but Dave and I, so we had originally looked at metal bookcases and they were just, they were gonna be flimsy, um, hard to move. We did talk about with, with these, they should be easily movable even with most of the books still in them, if, if needed. Um, part of the renovation was making, was changing the layout of the conference room, um, and then having the gym. So while the library is still available for all these other things, I'm not sure if it'll be necessary or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Well, Amanda, we will, um, we'll look into the, as Brad said, we'll look into the availability of the funds and the process. We, we need to be sure who all we need to engage. It's been a while since somebody's asked for these funds. Um, so, but we will address it and get back to you with a response. So thank you so much for coming and letting us know what the.
Great. Thank you all so much for, um, considering this for us.
Ready? Good night. Let's see, um, Bob, I think you're up next. And also, I want to just, um, I wanted to just check in. I noticed, um, so this is a public meeting and we like to document everybody who attends a public meeting. Um, just as if they walked through the door, we would know who is at the meeting. We have a caller number ten who doesn't have a name. Is there, um, a member of the public who's joined us that would like to say hello so we know who it is?
What is the phone number? Do you know the phone number?
I don't. I, can, can you tell Bob phone numbers? We just, it just shows caller.
Yeah, on my screen, it says caller five. Lynn says caller ten, but it's, it's just someone who's called in.
No.
I think it's probably me. I've got ear, I got earbuds from my cell phone, so I don't have to have this phone up to my ear all day.
No, when, when you talk, though, it's, it's registering on, um, you. So it's somebody else.
Somebody who hasn't spoken yet. We, well, all we can say is that we'd love to know who's out there because it's important. Um, and we welcome everybody. Um, and I guess beyond that, we just have a mystery participant. Um, anyway, next up, Bob, is you about our implementation and, um, attendance policy?
Yep. So there, there are two documents I sent out. I'll start with, uh, the, uh, it says at the top, Town Plan Implementation Coordination, December tenth, discussion with select board. So, um, every month, I'll provide you a status report. Um, I'll walk you through that real quick. And then I think I'll just to get you guys some time back here, I'll jump down to the next steps on the, um, top seven tasks that I'm proposing. Uh, and then I'll real quickly take you through, um, some of the work that I got done in between this meeting and the last, uh, as well, out and mostly out on the town website. So if you go to page two, so, um, you know, basically, uh, in the last meeting, I talked about kind of low-hanging fruit tasks that I could knock out, you know, in between the meetings. And a lot of it was updating information on the website. It covered, uh, emergency contacts, energy efficiency, uh, natural resources, land use, uh, broadband availability. Actually, it's interesting, we talked about it earlier, that was updated. And I'll share some of that in a moment. Um, and then others tasked were marked complete because they're really just ongoing efforts that are in place and working well. So road commissioners, this plan implementation process that I work with you guys on, website maintenance, that type of stuff. So, um, and it's, it's listed in the appendix for, if you want the details. But there are basically fourteen that have been completed, four in progress, fifty-five not started. We have a total of seventy-three tasks in the plan. You can see in the lower left-hand corner there how they're arrayed, you know, by the timing. And, uh, and then the table on the right there, that is really just aligned to the different sections of the plan. Uh, the numbers, you know, that are completed, uh, in progress, et cetera. So I'll update this every month so you have kind of a line of sight into the progress that we're making. And if you skip page three, that's kind of, I'm proposing kind of moving some of the tasks around to focus on for the next six months on page three. But I'll hit that on page and the next page, or the page after next. If you go to page four, um, these are the tasks for the second half of twenty-twenty-one. Again, I won't go through those. Those are just for your reference for right now. And if you go to page five, this is really what I'm proposing. It's down in the, the tasks in the table in the bottom half of the slide there. Um, the first one is the town garage and the sand salt shed, really working, uh, again, with a subcommittee. You know, I, I'll get some, uh, on front porch, I'll ask for, you know, the public now also reach out to the planning commission and kind of resurrect the work we did a couple of years ago on the town garage and come back to you guys with, um, recommendations on that. And the same for task thirty-eight, which is, you know, uh, in tandem with figuring out what to do at the garage, let's also look at the town office grounds, parking and traffic flows. So those are two tasks that are in the plan. And we'll kind of, uh, bundle those together and form a subcommittee. And it'll probably take a couple of months to work through it. And then, you know, I'll give you, you guys an update on recommendations after the, the, um, subcommittee finishes the work. Um, for task thirty-nine, which is sharing cost of the transfer station, road maintenance and other town services, um, I'd like to just volunteer to work with Paul and Steve. I know you guys are looking at the Mount Tabor, uh, transfer station to start with. And I think there's, I think you mentioned, Lynn, uh, that there's probably some financial modeling that needs to happen to figure out how that'll work. So I'm happy to kind of roll my sleeves up on that one and see what we can, uh, bang out with, uh, Mount Tabor there. Task thirty-seven is the attendance policy, which I'll go through that next. I got the first draft of that in the second document I included. Uh, task nineteen, uh, broader citizen participation. Uh, I mentioned, uh, the Dandy Mount Tabor Now Board of Directors is meeting in January. And I'll bring this up to see if DMT Now wants to take that task on. And then economic development oversight. Uh, I've talked to Herb Ogden on this one from, uh, Mount Tabor. He's interested, uh, to team with me and, you know, uh, talking with the select board and seeing what we can do to get that joint, um, committee in place to help us with economic development. And, you know, Lyle's presentation tonight also sparked my interest. So I think we can, this marketing initiative, we can link into that work as well that we just heard about. And then lastly, is a local gathering place. Um, we are looking at our building here, the Village Square Building is what we're calling it. There have been several people interested in opening, uh, a gathering place of some kind here. So I've slowed it down because of the, the virus situation. But as that starts clearing up, um, we'll, we'll, uh, look into that with, uh, those folks. So I'll pause now just to get your guys' reaction. I mean, this is the proposal really for the next six to seven months to work through these tasks with, with you guys and, uh, kind of nail down where we want to go with them. Any comments on this?
Bob, my one thought is, um, sort of just in terms of, uh, priority, um, that I think that the, the, um, Mount Tabor, um, partnership on the transfer station, um, sort of comes before thinking too hard about the garage and the sand salt shed and what happens there. Because that's, and I'd just love to get that ball really rolling. So I'm, I'm putting in a plug for making that high priority. And I know it's on Stephen Paul's mind, too.
Okay, yeah, I'll thought that. We'll, we'll start with that one first, then.
Don't forget my mind.
I'm sorry, Brad.
What's on your mind?
Very much.
Yeah, it's just that Stephen Paul, we're gonna meet with the Mount Tabor folks down at the, um, transfer station. So, um, that's why I thought of them.
Okay.
How does the rest of the planning commission feel about these priorities?
Uh, I'm gonna review, I'm gonna review this with them in the January meeting. So I'll, I'll bring this in. But, but this is aligned to the original prioritization. It's not changed that much. It's, if you look, if you go into, if you go into the tasks, there are A priority tasks, which are the highest, B priority, C priority. And all of these are A priority tasks. I'm just kind of juggling them around. But I'll, you know, I'll review it with them, Brad, in January, get their feedback and let you know.
Anybody have anything else on this, or should we move, take a look at the attendance policy?
Okay, just real quickly. Okay, thank you, Paul. Um, if, if you go to the appendix, just real quick, this is some of the work that I did get done. These are the tasks that were completed. Page seven, hopefully you saw it on front porch. It was really an, an advertisement of the different capabilities on the website and also, um, letting folks, you know, go directly to all the stuff that I updated. So if you hadn't seen it, you can see that on page seven. Page eight is the broadband update that I mentioned. And when you land on the homepage, the living here box there on the upper right, there's a link which launches the two, uh, pictures down in the bottom of that slide. There, there's map of the strongest broadband and then that little table, you can see Dandy is number seven in the state.
Yeah.
We are, we are serving site, seven-hundred-and-ninety-one out of seven-hundred-and-ninety-three, uh, buildings with the strongest available broadband in, in the world. And Mount Tabor is number one. Every household is, is serviced with that. So that, that's been updated out there. Page nine is, uh, all the pages that needed updating about, um, information on the town. I synced it with the town plan. And then a lot of the links are broken, uh, you know, on page ten, those I had to get fixed. You know, on page 10, those I'll have to get fixed as well. So I just wanted you to see that. That's kind of the work that I got done in between this meeting and last.
Yeah, and the website, I thought, I was at the website today because, and thank you for posting our job announcements and description and application for our road commissioner. And I thought, you know, it was easy to find right at the top. I thought the website, you know, it was refreshing.
Yeah, and Rob in Madison does a wonderful job that we can see all. And it just looks, it's much more attractive, I think, now that she's been maintaining. And I just go out and do things here and there, but she really does most of the work.
Yeah.
Yep, so real quickly on the attendance policy, then, if you all have that, that's the other document that I sent out. And so what this is, for appointed positions for the select board, you know, and I've listed them there, right? It's basically that this policy covers these positions. And some of them only have one named individual. I'm not going to read all those. You can see them there. The fence viewers have three named individuals. And then the planning commission has seven named individuals. So that's the scope of the positions that are covered. And, you know, I'm writing this as if it's a policy already enacted. And it can be changed once it is, you know, once you guys give me feedback. So it basically says that select board during your annual organizing meeting will determine if there are really any changes required in these appointments based on attendance. Once this is enacted, all existing appointees will get a copy of this to stand it. And then after that, whenever new appointees are appointed, and then, you know, depending on whether you pass it tonight or at a later time, we have to put in the policy when it was enacted. And then what is, the next section is the definition of an attendance problem. I wrote this, I researched like what other towns and what like boards of directors and different organizations have in place. And then I kind of cobble together those, you know, pulling the best of the best from all that. So one important thing is really setting a definition for what an attendance problem is. So I set three absences in a row, or misses a third of the total number of scheduled meetings in 12 months. Attendance is valid if you're in person or virtual. For the planning commission, including Rutland and Dandie, and the transportation council, there are minutes available for all of those. So what I'm suggesting there is the select board chair reviews those minutes to see if we are, and we can change it to somebody else. I just selected the chair. But by reviewing the minutes to see who and who was not there. And then for the other positions, it will really be if citizens complain, since it's a single individual, if citizens complain that they're not getting service from those people, we'll capture it that way. And then the response to the attendance problem, if it's determined that there is one, the select board chair will contact the individual to discuss it and to figure out whether it can be resolved. Then the chair will share what they learned with the select board in the meeting. They'll decide if we need to terminate or take action. And then the board will notify the appointee as soon as possible and begin the recruiting process on Front Porch. And then the last piece is just, the select board, you know, will try to choose the replacement in the next meeting if possible, if not, as soon as practical after that. So that's it.
Thanks, Bob. That's a nice start on it. How do people feel about this?
Sounds good.
Seems like a logical way to go about, you know, keeping track of this to me. And I like the idea that everybody has it. It's up front. It's not a surprise to anybody. It's written down. Would anybody like? No, go ahead, Brad.
I can see how it works for the planning board, but those other positions where it's just one person, you know, sometimes they might not be called out, or like the fence viewers, they might not be called out for three years, but then all of a sudden something comes up and they're needed.
Yeah, that's why I said, Brad, it's really more citizen-based for those single positions. If a citizen needs one and one doesn't show up, that's the only way I could figure out how to do those. I mean, I know what you're saying. It's like.
I think that's.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
I said, I agree with you there.
Okay. Yeah, I called that out. It's down under the definition, making it separate.
And maybe the time has come that, you know, we do away with the wayer of coal and the inspector. Or, I mean, they're quaint, but, you know. Half a century or.
Yeah. Of course, if they don't have any responsibilities, they can't fail to show up, so.
So do you want to vote on it tonight, Lynn, or do you?
I'd love to hear a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept the attendance policy as written?
Can't quite do it that way. What you have to do is you have to call this the first reading. And then you have to advertise it. And then you have a chance for the public to respond to it. And you have your second reading and adopt it.
Okay.
So you want me to post it on Front Porch, Lynn? Is that enough?
Yeah, what about a motion to post it, to have this be the first reading and to post it on Front Porch?
And a copy at the town office.
And a copy at the town office. Brad, would you like to make that motion?
In our posting places, the town office and the post office, sites and so forth.
So your motion is to accept this as the first reading and to post it in all our posting places?
Yes.
Okay.
And what are the posts? It's town office, post office, and Nichols still?
Yeah.
Nichols, Ford, White Fuel Stop, and Otter Creek Fund Center.
Okay. I guess I'll need some traveling around.
Sure. Can I hear a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? All right, so we'll call on the motion. Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. So the motions carry. We have our first reading of our attendance policy. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Brad.
Before I turn the video off and go upstairs, Paul and I, this is a different topic. Paul and I met at the speed sign today. We're trying to program it to get it working on South Main. And Paul, I went back after we turned the power on, and it needs to charge up more. I can't program it yet. So I'll keep watching it.
It's winter time, too, and the shortest days of the year are coming up, so hopefully we get enough sunshine tomorrow. Yeah, I checked it later on, too, Lynn.
Yep. Yeah, so I'll keep looking at it. At the end of the day, and if it looks like it's ready, then I can program it for my PC.
Okay. All right, so I'm good, Bob. Thanks.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Good night.
Good night.
Hi, Bob.
All right, so next up is our service agreement for the hazard mitigation. So this is, remember last month, we awarded the contract to the Rutland Planning Commission? And Stephanie has sent us the service agreement. There is a little caveat here. We need to make sure that we have the subgrant agreement for the money from the state. And there's been some emails back and forth with Janice on that and the other Stephanies. They're both named Stephanie. It's kind of confusing. And so what I would suggest is if people are comfortable with this, and I read through it, you know, we've done this before with our RPC. It's basically the same agreement we've entered into, you know, before. The dollars are correct. I would say, I would look for a motion maybe that would authorize me to sign that as soon as we are sure that we've got the subgrant information in place.
Almost.
Can I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? We'll ask Paul.
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn, yes. All right. See if I can find our agenda and see what's up next. Oh, our road commissioner report is next.
All right, well, we already kind of discussed over the salt and metering out. Like I said, I talked to them, and I think things will improve. And it's just a matter of doing it the right way. And, you know, just hopefully we can save on the salt and stuff. And I just read an article in the paper where eventually salt's going to be eliminated because of the erosion into the water system and stuff. So as we go, I don't know what the alternative is going to be, but, you know, we just try and keep the roads safe and use as little as possible to keep them safe. And that's the main thing. And so we'll go from there. I checked with the road crew, the two small storms that we had. And I did mention to them, I says, are you comfortable with just the two of you? And they agreed that both of them could handle it with the small amount that we had. And we'll continue this until we get somebody in that position, I guess. And they agreed that if, said that if they do need something or somebody, that we could get somebody in and just to help them out through the storm. We've been pretty fortunate here the last two months, or a month and a half, to not have any big storms. But so far, they're doing a great job, the two of them. And I had to call them back out the other night. Whatever night I just said that was, that we got the storm during the day, and it kind of lasted in. And they thought they had the material down to hold them through the night. And then the weather switched, and we got a glaze over the roads, and I got called. And they had to go back out around six. And then they took care of the roads, and then they were fine in the morning. So they are doing a great job. And I told them that, just the two of them. So far, so good.
Yeah. Paul, if I just remind people that we have posted the on-call position internally as we're required to. And it was a seven day, it'll be up on Monday. So after that, we can distribute that as far and wide as we would like.
Yep.
Yeah.
And Bob mentioned the speed signs south of town, and we just pitched it up. It's been up for over a week, but we didn't dare to plug it in without Bob and I being there to program it and our schedule to keep up. And we didn't quite dare to plug it in because we didn't know if it came on in the middle of the night, it'd be flashing, waiting to be set up. So we held off. And today, we both were able to meet it, too. And I guess it was late enough in the day, and we did plug it in. And so far, nothing's flashing down there. I'm sure we get a phone call. But hopefully, we'll have that up and running in the next few days. And once that battery gets charged up, that should handle the, keeping it charged through the day, even in the winter. We, I talked with you, Lynn, on this, and also talked with Greg. I stopped a tractor trailer hauling a 50-foot by 14-foot modular home going up Dandie Hill Road.
Coming to my street.
Was that? Yeah, I went to your street. Yeah. So I cut him off at the pass like the Lone Ranger. I had to drive 60 miles an hour up the Brook Road, sorry, but didn't get picked up for speeding. And I just barely caught him on the Hopper Road. And he was just sifting along up through with his truck in the front with the flashes going and asked him what the hell he was doing on the road with a few other words. And he told me to calm down. And I said, well, I'm getting sick of these tractor trailers on our back roads. And he said, this is where they told me to go. And he whipped out his paperwork from our good old state of Vermont, Department of Motor Vehicles. And it did state that they were to come up Route 7, get onto the Brook Road, or the Dandie, or the Brook Road, basically. Go up Dandie Hill, then get back onto the Brook Road, and continue to Four Corners, Dandie, Pollitt, and to your road length. And I took a picture of it. And I called Greg at the state that we work with through our grants and stuff. And he told me how to get ahold of DMV, which I've been trying for the last four days. And due to COVID and everything out, they basically aren't taking any phone calls. So I'm going to have to go back with Greg again. And he said, that's the only way we're going to resolve this, is the DMV, and Greg agreed the same thing, that tractor trailer come out of Hoozick. It should have came up Route 30, and then up from Pollitt and onto your road length. Instead, they sent them up Route 7. And so I know the GPS is hauling a lot of them. And that was another thing I didn't realize, and somebody else may have already known it. But Greg was telling me that these trucking companies, a tractor trailer GPS is programmed and got different programming in it than what our cars do and what our remote ones that we buy. He said, if they keep them updated, they will tell them what road they're on, and it'll tell them what class road it is. And they're just stay off the damn thing. It's like if they pull onto Dandie Hill, it'll tell them they're going on their Class 3 road and with the weight limit that they're not allowed to go on. Which I didn't realize this, but that's neither here nor there. But the main thing is I got to get ahold of DMV and get this changed. And I'm not even sure, maybe Doug, is that's why that low-dead dump truck got caught up on Staples. I don't know where they were headed. I didn't ever heard. And the same with the log trucks that went to that log cabin beyond you, Doug.
Yeah.
Yeah, the state is sending them on some of these roads. And we got to put a stop to it.
Yep.
Yeah, well, another thing I did find out, Greg said, if you have any damage to these roads, you get the description of the truck or whatever you can get. And the state is equipped to pay damages for any roads that are damaged by these trucks being on them. But the thing is, I don't want them on a damn road to start with. That's a danger. I met the tractor trailer, and I assume, this was this afternoon, I met him right at the Hopper Road and Dandie Hill and Calvin Hill intersection. And I assume that was Land Freight. I would assume that was coming from the guy on the top of, by IH's up there with with that company. He was coming down. And on that corner, a 50-foot tractor trailer is not, shouldn't be allowed on our road, our back road. But until he gets to the point where he, I don't know how he's setting up in his building there in Four Corners, but that truck's still on the road. I didn't bother stopping him because I figured that's where he was coming from. But so that, I'm still pursuing. I'm going to have to go back to Greg again and see if he's got an inside number to get ahold of DMV to keep these trucks off our back roads. And also, back to the speeding thing in town, I've gotten so many complaints in the last month. And a lot of them are right here in Dandie Village. And a lady that called me yesterday morning, she knew what the truck was and who it was because he had his emblem on there for his landscaping. And all I could tell her to do is, like I do the rest of them, as long as you get a description and know. is, like I do the rest of them, as long as you got a description and know who it is, call the sheriff department with that, and let the sheriff department hunt them down. So that's, you know, that's all we can do on that. And the only, the only other thing, and I don't want to be a grinch here before Christmas, is something we're going to have to look into because it's dangerous, it was dangerous when we had the store open there in the village. It's nice to see all the lights and stuff in the village with our businesses, we got opened up, but they can't park in front of the stores because I know what happened when Nichols was there, it didn't happen often, but the last two weeks I've been noticing, the one that's on where Herb Ogden was, there's an out-of-state car, I assume they're the ones that opened the business, but they're parked in front of the building, which they're on the line or over the line for where they should be, and then the ones that's quite often is the car parked right in front of Nichols steps, which they're out into the road a good two feet. So, you know, like I said, I don't want to be, I don't want to be, you know, saying they can't park there, but I got a feeling we're going to end up with a small fender bender there, or somebody crossing the street with a car blocking the line of view, or then trying to get out of the parking lot. So I don't want to approach this because I don't want them to stink or complaining, but it's just, that's probably something that's going to have to be looked into.
All right. All right. We also have a fleet permit to do tonight. Let me see, let me pull it up. Do you remember which one it is? It's V-Lox, yes. They have two trucks, the largest of which is 99,000 pounds. Anybody want to make a motion to...
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion, may second it.
Okay, Steve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. I'll let you choose, Chris. And I have to do the roll call vote, so hold on a second, let me get to my list. Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. Okay. Moving right along, we also have an E-cycle, let's see, it's an Amendment 3 to our E-cycle, so it is a contract extension, so you all got that, I think, in your materials from Janice. NCR and Collector are parties of Mont State Standard Plan. Pardon? The contract is hereby extended for an additional annual period commencing in January 1 through December 31, 2021. The, the contract stays with its original term, so we basically would just be, you know, extending our current contract on E-cycles. Steve, do you have any insights into that?
The only thing I can say is I'll make the motion, go ahead and sign it.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Paul, do you approve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. Okay. So E-cycle is done. That brings me to, so we're not getting into discussing any of our negotiating because we'll go into executive session to talk about strategy, but we can in public session determine, so we're going to be doing contract negotiations with our union, and what we have done in the past, this worked well, is we chose two of us to be the point people with lawyers to sit down and do those negotiations, and others could join if they wanted, but we needed two that would be there every single meeting and have the consistency and be there. And so my thoughts, I was going to offer myself, if you're interested, because I did it last time, Hope and I did, and that would maybe bring some consistency, and maybe make the process go a little quicker because I'm pretty up to speed on that, and then my thought was, Paul, you as our acting road commissioner, if you would join me, if other people have thought, that's fine, and I'd love to hear a motion to authorize two people to represent the select board.
I'll make the motion.
Paul, yeah, Steve will second. Paul, are you willing?
Yeah, you got it. I guess I am now. It would be, it would be interesting, I just, I don't know, I never did that stuff before, but I would kind of like to see how it goes, but I'm, I'm just, uh...
Are you playing out?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. I know what Hope and Lynn went through the last time, and I'm like, I don't want to do this crap. So I'll give it a whirl, Lynn, if it gets too much overwhelming, I'll have my hearing aids turned up and hopefully hear something that's going on and try to help out as much as I can then.
All right, great. And then the other question for us, oh, so we've got that motion on the table, let's vote on that.
I just want to, I just want to tell Paul, it's very easy, Paul, just say no.
Yeah, thanks, Brad. No.
Good advice. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Paul, do you agree?
We need a second.
Uh, it's time now.
I'm sorry, I thought we had a second. Nope, we need a second for that motion. Brad, yep.
I already seconded it.
All right.
Steve seconded.
Doug made the motion, Steve seconded. Okay. Paul, you in favor?
Uh, yeah, I guess.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. All right, we got a team. And then the other thing is whether we want to engage Ryan Smith and Carbine to represent us. You know, the one thing I would say is that, you know, of all the work we've been doing on that side agreement and is done, they know that contract very well now, and I think that they would be the right ones to represent us, and hopefully we can have some efficiency in this process, so. I'd love to hear a motion to approve them representing the town for our contract negotiation.
I'll make the motion.
I would motion that.
So I heard Brad, who was the second? Steve? Doug?
Yeah.
So Chris, did you get a first and a second?
I got Brad's motion, and I'm not sure about the second.
Okay. We need a second.
I'll second it.
There we go. Doug seconded. Any further discussion? All right, Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. All right, so the next thing maybe we can do is we can, I hear a motion to go into executive session, we'll excuse Chris, and we'll talk maybe briefly about some strategy.
I'll make the motion.
And just to let the public know, we're not, there'll be no action taken, this is just a discussion, there'll be no action taken, so if any of the public wanted to come back when we reconvene out of executive session, there'll be no action, nobody's going to miss anything, so.
Do you want to brief through public comment?
Oh, yes, thank you, absolutely. We do want to ask for public comment before we go. Thank you, Chris, forgot all about that. Yeah, do we have any public who would like to comment? Terry, you're there, do you want to comment?
Yes. Nope, skip them listening.
All right. And we still have our mystery caller number 10. Mystery caller number 10, do you have anything to add? Oh, well. All right. So then, let's see, somebody made a motion to enter executive session?
Yes, I did.